For today's specials, we have crustacean salmon steaks delivered by Harvey Shutt, one of us ninety years beyond. Can you eat that? I'm going to determine that, but he's also involved with food group in another capacity. He volunteers twice a week for the comfort food tent. Father, thank you very much for doing that. We also have a wild rice barrio.
Okay.
I'd love to talk to him.
All right, good. You sure? I'll hear.
As I pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. We stand one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're on. Minutes, anybody have a problem with minutes? That's good. Okay. Anybody good in the mail?
We're all happy with it.
Pretty good? Pretty good with the minutes? The move, second, high. Good. That works. Okay. Bills and payroll, is there anything that's coming around?
We're ready here to go around. Thank you.
Turf field update. Go on, be here, you do.
Go ahead.
Maureen, I met with Mark Corry and...
Kevin Hunt.
Kevin Hunt.
And Green.
Green Engineering and who were the consultants?
Yeah.
Turf consultants or something like that.
Right.
About the possibility of trying to get some of the fields in the town of Littleton with some type of trust. So we have that hundred thousand dollars that we graciously gave to Omni for active recreation. And they're going to be coming before us next month to talk about maybe releasing some of those funds to do a feasibility study and see where they're at as far as maybe turfing at some of the fields in the town of Littleton. Softwood fields, footpath fields, lacrosse fields, the multipurpose fields, all of that. So they start getting the ball rolling so that maybe we can do a funding for it in spring if they try to do.
Right, right, yeah. They'd be looking for funding in the fall for the study. And it's recommended that you provide input on that since it's yours.
Since we kind of got the money, you know, courtesy of it.
Did we actually, I know we were stuff has been promised, we signed it off, but the host agreement was sort of a...
Well, no, we had the money.
The manipulation of Selectman and ZBA.
Well, the money, we have the money, we haven't put in the CPC yet.
Right.
Right, and that is a whole number logistic issue.
That's what we're talking about, too. Maybe putting it in there so we can get a 25% matching funds. So that's where it was turf.
Yeah, so nothing against it, but what they should do is actually go to the Recreation Department, have it prioritized, and then open space a Recreation Committee, have it prioritized, because that's sort of a state process. And I don't think anyone on the CPA Committee has any problem with someone with designated money funneling it through and getting a match and saving it for that. The only problem there is the Department of Revenue has not approved that provision, and they're two years behind on that.
Oh, well, not only that, but we need to kind of prioritize which fields, so.
Right.
We're going to look at all the fields, the broad...
But maybe that would be Rec Department and Open Space.
Well, that's what we're going to suggest.
I mean, that's the planning process.
Well, no, actually, the planning process on this one is to move forward with the study on it.
Right.
And they'll come up with an idea of which fields would make the most sense and estimate, and the people in town get to decide what they want to do, if anything.
Right. I would think the expertise would be...
The guys who they were pretty, they've done hundreds of fields.
Right, but I mean locally, the expertise.
As far as Green International looking at the proposal, is that what they're going to do, do a study?
They're doing a kind of a layout of the fields and stuff, and then giving it to consultants or whoever they were.
Right, and I'll get a scope of services and a cost estimate from them next, and then we'll bring that to you and see what your recommendation is to move to town meeting.
Yeah, they're not doing anything until the 11th, until they meet with us on September 11th.
Well, they have a hard time giving somebody money for a feasibility study for something that, you know...
Well, I kind of said, why don't we do a design build, just don't spend any money like the people that are going to actually bid it, design it, build it, and tell us what it's going to cost.
Like the track organization, which still are the raising the fund.
But I got a kid in the school system, so just so you know, and he plays sports. So is that, will that release me from being able to vote?
No, no, yes, stop voting.
Just want to make sure.
I think it's so...
No, and I got a kid in the sports program.
Well, I was an athlete, what does that preclude me from voting?
Well, if you can't be an athlete, be an athletic supporter.
I guess so. I led you into that one.
You walked all over that one, didn't you, big fella?
Um, who else?
Doug's here on Washington Drive.
Okay.
If you're ready for that.
Sure. Since it's next in line, he's number E. E for Washington Drive Extension. All right. We have a bond in place, don't we?
You do, but it's not enough to, that's what I'm asking is, so Jim, right now, or the DPW, has a $2,500 bond.
Yes.
Which they've not returned to me, they just signed the permit the other day. So can I add to that, or do I have to do a completely new bond with you folks?
You want the... What I was thinking, he doesn't have any bond with you yet.
Right.
That was, all the work was just on his own for that. But he wants to sell the first house.
Right.
And in order to do that, I was thinking if you wanted to go through the same process as you do with subdivisions, do a cost estimate and set a bond for the amount they can deposit.
To finish the rest of the roadway.
Right.
Right, everything's done with the exception of the final pavement, which I don't want to do until the lower lot is complete.
Well, what about the house that you're selling down?
The pavement is down to, just to the driveway, that is, for the new, for the 43 Washington. The final pavement is done to the driveway of 43 Washington, and everything beyond that is not complete.
All right, so they're on final pavement.
They are.
They can get into their house.
Yes, they can.
On the final pavement, the roadway's left in...
That's correct. And all the drainage, everything is done, and that's why we did an asphalt drawing, showing what's existing or what's there currently.
We have a...
There's two. And I can give you this one as well.
Yeah, it wasn't in your packets, it's new.
Oh, it's in here. Go here. All right. So you've done down to the driveway?
Correct, and we've done everything as far as drainage down where the riprap actually meets into the lower, is it not burbs, but the cross street.
When are you passing on this lot?
Hopefully with your blessing on Tuesday.
Right, not until...
All right, lot D is the one that there's a house on it now.
Correct.
Lot E is the next house that you wish to build?
Yes.
And you have a building permit for that already?
I do not have it in hand.
And how much frontage do you have on, lot E doesn't have 150 feet of frontage, correct?
Yes, it does.
On the road?
Yes.
On paved road?
On paved road, no, yes.
On paved road, no?
From there to there? From there to there, is how many feet?
I'm sorry, I have 50 feet, more than 50 feet of frontage on a paved road. I still have to, they're still working on the lot determination.
All right, but...
With the town council.
All right, but once again, you still don't have, you don't have 150 feet of frontage regardless, correct?
Right, but the whole purpose of me doing the road was so that I had 50 feet of frontage of paved area.
Well, how did you trim, and you only needed 50 feet?
Right, you, that's the process that the planning board went through.
The first time, because the first time he came for that first lot...
No, he came in for both lots.
The first time he came in was for the first lot, and he asked for, he wanted to do 50, and you said 150 feet, because it's a paper road and it's 150 feet, and then somehow or another got knocked down to 50 feet. Then from there, you added the 100 feet to get 50 feet into the next one. So call that the frontage.
When he did the application to you, he did it for both lots there? And that's how the decision is written?
He did it for both lots, and we said, go in 50 feet to here because of this potential to be the turnaround or whatever, that's why we stopped there.
That turnaround right there is the one where the, whether it was paved or not paved, gravel, ungravelled, that kind of stuff.
Correct.
And is it from there on, does it drop off like crazy or something?
It drops off, we have a, like you guys had asked for a granite curb, and then I also put a six-by-six Jersey barrier beyond the granite curb with reflectors on it as well.
We're not...
Down the bottom of the hill.
We're not concerned with this one yet, because he hasn't come in for building permit. We can take the second bite of that apple when he comes in for that, for the conditions. What we need to do is decide how much money we want to set aside, because he doesn't have the final coat on the first lot. He's got 2,500, and that's not enough to...
No, my quote from Parsons Paving was $4,000 to complete the remainder of the paving.
From Dogwood all the way to the end of Elm Road, where it meets?
No, from the end of the driveway for lot D, which is 43 Washington now, down to the curb.
Where the curb is.
Correct.
The curb to the Dogwood side, or the curb to the, down at Elm, past lot E?
Down, just past Elm, the curb.
Lot E, the end of Lot E.
Lot E, I'm sorry.
And that is the top coat, $4,000 to do from there to there.
Correct.
And he ran this by Jimmy, or no?
Jim's been out, so I, Dan had come over and went over everything with him, but I had talked to Katie over at the DPW and asked about the 2,500, did they want to keep it, and that I'll add to it with you folks, or how do you guys want to handle that?
So who's got the 2,500 now?
DPW has it.
The Highway Department, and that's for their curb cut.
Okay.
Danny doesn't have anything with us for any of it.
No, I don't.
Right. But the security that you held was not signing up on the occupancy permit.
Right.
For the first house. He's asking for that now.
So we need some sort of security. So do you want to say $4,000 for the paving?
Right, and I can bring in the estimate to you tomorrow as well for that, from Parsons Paving.
Just to release the first lot.
Right.
You guys all right with that, if you want to do it that way?
How wide is that road?
19 feet.
And how much is going to be paved? How many feet are they going to pave in its entirety?
Just shy of 200 feet.
Well, if he has a quote that says it'll be paved now...
They're going to build your house for 50 bucks, you think it's going to be any good?
Do you want to get contingency on top of that, too, like 10%, like we normally...
We still have the 2,500 with the town, with them for the curb thing, right?
For the curb cut.
So between the two of them...
Right, but I don't know that you guys can...
Call mingle theirs.
We can't get theirs, so...
But even still, it still doesn't allow them to, he still doesn't have, that is a building lot regardless.
Right.
And when is this going to be paved?
I don't want to pave anything until I've completed the construction on the second lot.
If you don't like it, say so. You're looking at me.
Alternatively, how much?
What would make you happy?
5,000?
5,000 make you happy?
No, 4,000's are good enough.
Okay. Boy, do you have any problems, you know, bring us a bond for, bring us a cash for 4,000. 4,000 in cold, hard cash.
Actually, a check made out to the town of Littleton. It's the treasurer's office.
I'm going to go and get 4,000 cash and say, oh, I'm going to go smoke some...
The planning board, Bemelin Fund, it would get there, no?
No.
Where's Richard when you need him? Okay, and then we'll release the lot for, the first lot, lot?
Lot D.
Lot D.
Okay.
We'll send a note to Roland that we have the bond in place, and he can issue that seal.
And that will be paved to its entirety to the end of...
To the curb, that's down the bottom of the hill.
All the way to the end.
Yes, sir.
Is that in writing?
Your design that you approved is...
Is that?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, guys. See you tomorrow, Maureen. Thank you.
Okay, so...
Okay, so do I just bring up a slip to Roland from the treasurer?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Mark, no Jerry tonight?
All right, bye-bye.
What? No Jerry tonight?
No Jerry tonight.
Right.
Okay, the orchards, McIntosh Lane, bond update?
Yes. Peter is here for that.
Carol is here to, last time I was here, we established a bond amount on the roadway, and we talked about, I was going to put the drainage in and then post a bond, I believe it was in the neighborhood of $360,000. The process of putting the drainage in, some of the water main went under the drainage, so we got to get that in first. So I, drainage, want to post a bond for completion, completion of drainage and water, so it's going to reduce that from 360 to 50. So we just wanted the old cage, we'll go do that work. Next time, we will run to Maureen, the consulting engineer, and post it.
So you're using Green there, right?
Yes.
Okay, as long as you're happy with them, and they're happy with the number?
Well, we had reviewed the number before, gone through, and I double-checked your vote because we started talking about what would happen if we did the water main first, and your vote said either complete bond or bond with the drainage out. I said, well, we better bring it back to see, have you vote what the bond should be if the water main's taken out as well, is completed first as well. And so that's the 252 number on that...
That's how we came up with that?
Yeah, I kind of, I do.
If you remember, Green went through and...
Yeah, remember we went back and forth, back and forth on it?
Yeah, over $4,000.
Yep, so 252.
Correct.
Okay, so they sign off that it's done?
It's going to be...
No, when it's done, we'll be good to go then. Court of, 252 good?
Yep, mine with me.
Richard?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So both to set the bond about at 252.
252, once the Green is signed off on the other work can be taken care of, the water main.
And then the water department signs off.
Okay.
And everybody's...
All in favor? Yeah, all four of us.
Yes, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Maureen.
3:30, King Street plans?
Our friends for public hearing.
We have a 7:10 informal discussion. Do you want to do those at 8:30 while we have that little blow instead?
I'll just send them over.
All right, that makes more sense.
What is that one?
That is the congregation church.
The one they already started off?
Well, I was looking for a set of the north plans, and I hadn't had a designer.
Okay, we have a 7:10 informal discussion on 17 Low Inn. All right. I'm assuming Low Inn is not built, not, it says not constructed. Okay, and what are you proposing to do?
I'd like to put a house on the corner wall. What I'd like to do is just take the driveway off, not a damn show.
You were privy to the Washington Drive end of the discussion, we need frontage, so we need a road built. You can't get it off the driveway, so Low Inn...
Can I see that?
Is this the same thing?
Yeah, this is it. It's a better copy than that.
All right, where is, where is the lot presently?
This is the lot right here, and this is what the road does right now.
All right.
And I was hoping to just take the driveway off and bring it to the side.
Well...
Instead of, you know, building frontage, because the house is going to be caked up on the face of the road.
What is this right here, 250?
This is actually a neighbor's property, this is, there's a drainage, this is a small drainage, it goes like that on the block, and I have 20 feet on the back.
How is the topography down this way?
It's pretty much a flat.
Where is this?
This is my parents' house.
Your parents' house right beside it?
Yes.
Trying to think of where your house is if you're...
If you come up here, it's a different light.
Yeah?
Bring it down.
Okay, all right, sorry, so now, is this an empty lot?
That's an empty lot.
All right, because there's like locks and stuff like that, right? Okay, so it's, all right, now I know where that is.
Yeah, this lot doesn't have anything.
So in retrospect, what we did with the last fellow here, we need 50 feet.
It's always 50 feet. Don't tell the board that.
All right, so...
Now, would that be 50 feet this way, or 50 feet?
Frontage, it's going to be this way. Is this the paper street?
Yes.
Right here, then it would be 50 feet, and depending upon the topography and drainage, 19 feet wide, is that what we've, or are these 20 here?
See, you wanted to get a road, that's a paper road right now, it doesn't exist. You got to have, they shake out their frontage. And you can't start allowing people to build on paper roads, leaving them paper roads, otherwise we'd have driveways all over town. It's not going to happen. So you have to make the road.
So that's 50 feet, though, is that maintained by the town?
It's going to be part of the town, yeah. You have to build it to subdivision standards, and you're going to have to, the town's going to have to take it over.
19 adequate.
So, you know, just go in front of, go see, I suppose you could see Green International or something, or I don't know who you'd go to see, you know, talk to any excavator you know, and see what the soils are like, see what you have to do to grade it, this, that, and the other stuff, and get some form of a deal that will be happy with the Highway Department and anyone else.
Yeah, Maureen can get you the number of Green International, who we work with very well. They're very reasonable, and they're next door, they're in Westford.
And you might want to think about your driveway coming in, because fire department's going to weigh in on this, and they're going to want to be able to turn around and do something.
I meant we're going to be already on this, I wouldn't know if there's a key thing.
But if you're finishing the road off, see, the road keeps going this way, so you have to make it so that the people, this road can keep going if anyone...
Well, it can't, there's a septic system right here that they've built on it, so I understand what you're saying, but it's a new point.
That's not our problem.
I understand that, but it's a new point as far as we need to keep the road going.
No, it's not, because if this person here decided he wanted to access that, and those lots are good, that septic system's...
I was going to say, you might want to stop now, because they're building a giant retaining wall right here, so this one.
What are you talking about? This one?
On the other side, where Low Inn would keep going, there's a big raised septic system here, and they dug this out and put a retaining wall here, and that's it. So that's all I'm saying.
But this doesn't front Low Inn, this fronts something else.
That fronts the wall.
Okay.
It doesn't matter, the paper road, you can't construct something in a paper road. So unless they want to tear it out, they better...
We'll send a letter to Roland about that.
Well, yeah, so this will be 50 feet, or talk to...
And it'd be, isn't that was part of the deal with that, with that last fellow here, was that they backed into an opening, there was another paper road to be?
Right, so we need some way from...
So 50 feet back into there and out to go, or?
Yeah.
I don't think they're going to need a 75-foot turnaround, correct?
Where's the nearest? No, no.
And he's got to stay inside the right of way.
Is there water there?
Yeah.
Where's the nearest hydrant, do you know?
Right here.
Okay.
It's 100 feet, 125 feet.
So I think the only obstacle is creating an extra...
50 feet?
50 feet of roadway.
Roadway.
They work on that with...
Right, so I gave them copies of the Washington Drive, and then also the Lexington Place one, that was kind of similar, but I would say if you're going to have, you might have Green review this, so they shouldn't be designing for him.
That would avoid us having to pay, or you having to pay them twice if you pick someone different, right?
Conflict.
Yeah, well, they would, Green would review it for us, so he needs somebody else to design.
Right, and he...
Well, we had...
Yeah, so don't use Green, is that what you're telling them?
That's my suggestion.
Yeah, because they're going to review it, so.
For us.
Might use somebody else.
Well, there's a, Maureen, you have a list of engineers that come in for us from time to time.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'm actually working with engineers on why.
Well, I don't get it, if we trust Green, you know, to make sure our stuff is right, why should we trust him to make some of, somebody else's stuff?
But then who's going to inspect it for...
Why do we trust Green?
Well, it's not that we don't trust him, it's the municipal drainage system.
What do you mean, what's wrong with lawyers?
We need...
Conflict of interest.
Peter, we need, we need a peer review.
All right.
I'll peek over it.
No, I didn't say peek review. Peer, peer review, yeah.
All right, any other questions, or you're good with that?
No, that was it, we'll take it from here.
Is that, is that lot perccable?
Thank you.
I believe so, it's not wet.
Okay.
I mean, we've never had a water issue there, and there's no standing water in the lot, so...
Now, that ends up on Baldwin Hill Road, Low Inn, right?
It would have, yeah.
If it carries forward.
If it carries, it would have ended up on Baldwin Hill.
Yeah, that's interesting, okay.
Okay, we have a 7:15, continue public hearing.
Thank you.
Definitives, open space subdivision, open space special permit, shared residential driveway, Tree Wood's not coming tonight?
It's not coming tonight.
Oh, God, it's a good day when there's Tree Wood, not, Sanderson Road, Oak Hill Sanderson Road with them out.
Does that mean we can't do a synecdoch here?
Why not? Oh, because...
No, actually, Dan sent comments and said he had no concerns with...
Ted?
Want to do the easy part first, Ted?
Sure.
Jeff, the plan?
Then it would be 50 feet. And depending upon the topography and drainage, 19 feet wide, is that what we've, or are these 20 here?
See, you wanted to get a road, a paper road right now, it doesn't exist. You got to have, they shake out their frontage. You can't start allowing people to build on paper roads, leaving them paper roads, otherwise we'd have driveways all over town. It's not going to happen. So you have to make the road.
That's 50 feet though, is that maintained by the town?
It's going to be part of the town, yeah. You have to build it to subdivision standards and you're going to have to, the town's going to have to take it over.
19 adequate.
So, you know, just go in front of, go see, I suppose you could see Green International or something, or I don't know who you'd go to see, you know. Talk to any excavator you know and see what the soils are like, see what you have to do to grade it, this, that, and the other stuff, and get some form of a deal that will be happy with the highway department and anyone else?
Yeah, Maren can get you the number of Green International, who we work with very well. They're very reasonable, and they're next door, they're in Westford.
And you might want to think about your driveway coming in, because fire department's going to weigh in on this, and they're going to want to be able to turn around and do something.
I meant we're going to be already on this, I wouldn't know if there's a key thing.
But if you're finishing the road off, see, the road keeps going this way, so you have to make it so that the people, this road can keep going if anyone...
Well, it can't, there's a septic system right here that they've built on it, so I understand what you're saying, but it's a new point. I understand that, but it's a new point as far as we need to keep the road going.
No, it's not, because if this person here decided he wanted to access that, and those lots are good, that septic system's...
I was going to say, you might want to stop now because they're building a giant retaining wall right here, so this one.
What are you talking about?
On the other side, where Low Inn would keep going, there's a big raised septic system here, and they dug this out and put a retaining wall here. So that's all I'm saying.
But this doesn't front Low Inn, this fronts something else.
That fronts both.
It doesn't matter, the paper road, you can't construct something in a paper road. So unless they want to tear it out, they better...
We'll send a letter rolling about that.
Well, yeah, so this will be 50 feet or half.
And it'd be, isn't that was part of the deal with that, with that last fellow here, was that they backed into an opening, there was another paper road to be?
So we need some way from...
So 50 feet back into there and out to go, or?
Yeah.
I don't think they're going to need a 75-foot turnaround.
Where's the nearest?
Correct?
No.
And he's got to stay inside the right of way.
Is there water there?
Yeah.
Where's the nearest hydrant, do you know?
Right here.
Okay.
Oh, it's 100 feet, 125 feet.
I think the only obstacle is creating that extra...
50 feet?
50 feet of roadway. They work on that with...
Right, so I gave them copies of the Washington Drive, and then also the Lexington Place one, that was kind of similar. But I would say if you're going to have, you might have Green review this, so they shouldn't be designing for him.
That would avoid us having to pay, or you having to pay them twice if you pick someone different, right?
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, well, they would, Green would review it for us, so he needs somebody else to design.
Yeah, so don't use Green, is that what you're telling them?
That's what my suggestion.
Yeah, because they're going to review it, so.
For fast.
Well, there's a, there's a, Maren, you have a list of engineers that come in for us from time to time.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'm actually working with engineers on why.
Well, I don't get it, if we trust Green, you know, to make sure our stuff is right, why should we trust him to make some of, somebody else's stuff?
But then who's going to inspect it for...
Why don't we trust Green?
Well, it's not that we don't trust him, it's the municipal drainage system.
What do you mean, what's wrong with lawyers?
We need...
Conflict of interest.
Peter, we need, we need a peer review.
All right.
I'll peek over it.
No, I didn't say peek review, peer, peer review, yeah.
Any other questions, or are you good with that?
No, that was it, we'll take it from here.
Is that lot perccable?
Thank you.
I believe so, it's not wet.
Okay.
I mean, we've never had a water issue there, and there's no standing water in the lot, so...
Now, that ends up on Baldwin Hill Road, Low Inn, right?
It would have, yeah.
If it carries forward.
If it carries, it would have ended up on Baldwin Hill.
That's interesting, okay.
Okay, we have a 7:15, continue public hearing.
Thank you.
Definitives, open space subdivision, open space special permit, shared residential driveway, Treewood's not coming tonight?
It's not coming tonight.
Oh, God, it's a good thing when there's Treewood not, Sanderson Road, Oak Hill, Sanderson Road, Woodcomb Out.
Does that mean we can't do a scenic road hearing?
Why not? Oh, because...
No, actually, Dan sent comments and said he had no concerns with...
Ted?
Want to do the easy part first, Ted?
Sure.
Jeff, the plan of the trees that are going to be cut?
Sure. For the record, Jeff Bramble, Nizeron Corporation, with me is Paul Alton.
Yeah, yeah, we know who you are.
This is the Oak Hill section, we're in two sections.
Could we close those blinds so that we can see that? You can't see anything on the, on the screen.
So the, the trees that are in the scenic road are here and here. I'm going to go to this one here, I'm going to blow that up. And here they are.
Would you, it's just coming in the screen so poorly, could you move it forward so it's not in the shadow of the slats?
We've got plenty of room.
Have any trees been posted, because that is part of the process that...
They have been, right, Maren?
People can actually see it.
They've been posted. So one is a, we call it a 15-inch double bull pine, which is right here, right on the edge of the roadway, that's kind of in the street roadway right here. And one is a 48-inch white oak, it's diseased, it's wrong, it's dead, it should be removed anyway, regardless of that. So those two are there, they are to increase the site distances from these two, these two accesses going out. You could easily get, you know, you'll see before you get to the intersection, and if you're at the intersection, trees get in the way of the trucks. Like I said, one's a big, big pine, double pine, and one's a diseased oak tree, a very big one.
Jeff, those lot numbers?
Excuse me?
Those lot numbers?
Lot numbers, four and five. They're both, yeah, one's on four and one's on five. On Woodcomb Road, if you recall, sorry, Woodcomb Avenue, we're entering where there's currently a pretty good-sized hill coming up, so that hill gets cut out. In that hill, there are four trees, a 15-inch oak, a 24-inch oak, another 24-inch double oak that measures 24 total, and a 12-inch hardwood, I don't think it's oak, I don't think it's maple either, I couldn't determine what it was, but it's a hardwood tree. So there's four of them in a row right here, they're on the top of the slope, they're in the right way, and as you remember from way back, like 15 years ago, this was always the entrance, so they were always sort of slated to be removed.
As Curious, maybe you mentioned, what other, I am just curious.
Oh, I said 24, 15, 24, 24, and then 12. With that, this one here has some stone wall, and I've shown a stone wall to be constructed on one side of the roadway, and if you look, that stone wall is going to have a 5 by 12 covered school bus stop in there, so you see a little bit of wall, and you see a bus stop, and you see some wall again, so it all tie in really nice, with the landscaped island out front and all that, it'll be a nice area, sidewalk comes right down to it, so, that's all.
Right, and last thing, you thought those weren't impacted, but, yeah, and that's because of the closeness to the road?
Yeah, they're right on the edge of the right of way, literally, you could argue that they're basically on the right of way. All four of them. So that's just...
And that's the only wall part now? Okay, I remember driving...
There's no walls on the other side.
Right.
This, on Oak Hill...
No walls on Sanderson?
There's walls, and there's no walls, and there's walls, we are, we're in the guiderail section, which I presume that when they built the guiderail, they did something with the walls, so. There's some walls over here, that we're not touching, but whatever, these are terrible walls, and down here, these are terrible, guiderails right here, so these two, there's no walls at all on that one. There were on the previous 4A and I lot, and we came into a special permit here, but these walls, they're made of stone, and so you can see a remnant of a wall, but nothing yet.
Jeff, which drawing is the, is the plantings planned?
What sheets? In the pack of the 23 sheets?
11, and sheet 12.
And these were always marked on the sheet, from my recall?
They've always been...
Just so you thought they weren't covered, but...
Yeah, we, we had a brain miscalculation, one of the things.
Right, and I thought that might be the case the last time, but that's fine.
Now, just so you know, on the Sanderson Road portion, to recollect from previous, we have four very large trees all in a row on Sanderson Road. Our original plan was to come straight in, actually, it was supposed to be on this side of the roadway. We moved that, because those four trees cannot be cut, they're beautiful trees, so it's not like we're not paying attention. And we've taken this roadway and moved it all the way over here to avoid the trees, that also avoids the wall. At this point, it's a beautiful wall, when you get over here, there's no wall left hanging on.
Okay, even though it's spray painted, that was the original straight ride?
Yes. Well, you see it's spray painted, that's not where it is.
Oh, okay.
That's where we were thinking of putting it, and we had site distance.
Sure.
You guys have any questions about the scenic roadway? Richard?
The scenic roadway part, so when you take, remove the walls, any, any wall off by the road, what, what are we going to do with the stones from those walls?
Okay, there's only one place where there's any walls, that's right here on Woodcomb. Again, it's at the top of the hill right now, and what I'm asked to do is take the entire length of the walls that are being removed and place it on one side of the roadway, not both sides, which we normally do, but on one side, the side that faces where you actually drive most of the time. And I'm trying to incorporate that with the bus stop. And part of the reason I did that is underneath this, you see these two gray areas, that's my underdrain system, and I didn't want to impede on the underdrain system there, so that in case that has to be removed in the future, they don't have to remove the walls.
So you're going to take out how many feet of wall on the road?
It says remove 90 feet.
And how many feet are you putting back in?
90 feet.
Less the 12 feet?
No, including the bus stop, so we have, you know, a certain amount of feet.
10 feet, bus stop, 80 more.
Exactly.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else? Everything you've done on this plan has been, you've listened to us, you've done a good job. I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I do have another question, the granite curb is going how far in?
Off the roadway?
Yes.
It's the full curb return and I think plus 10 feet.
I knew we had talked about doing Batumina's curb, but I thought we were doing the entry in granite.
Yeah, we had finished that waiver request, we're going to talk about that later tonight. We had talked about doing this portion of the roadway all slope granite.
That's right.
This is the scenic road tree here.
And the rest will be in Cape Cod berm?
On this road, on Allen Road, there'd be no curbing.
We still have some discussions to do about curbing later, so all we're doing right now is let's address that and get this on.
So you had a question?
Yes.
Name for Mara, please.
Tom Cawthorne, Codder Road. I have a question, on Woodcomb, have, were these houses packed up to some names up in this area? What kind of a buffer are you going to leave for trees up in that, up in that area?
Do you want me to answer that now?
We're really in the scenic roadway, but since you asked, we've already answered that, but...
You may have another question about buffer too, because I see someone else in the audience.
All along the area that we're working, along Orchard, Orchard, Old Orchard, what's the name?
Old Orchard Lane.
Orchard Lane.
Orchard Lane. That whole strip, we're having a 20-foot buffer that we're providing on that property, even though in some areas there already is a buffer. And this property here, which is owned by the Tess's, we're also putting a 20-foot no buffer, no cut.
So the 20-foot buffer, you're going to leave trees in that area, right?
No touching the trees in that area, correct.
Okay. And while you're there, I mean, it's our reason by asking the next question about the Woodcomb owner, right, if there could be a 20-foot no-cut area?
There is an owner that has contacted us, Mr. Simone, and he bought this lot that was previously owned by McDonough, and we're proposing a 15-foot no-cut zone on his property, all the way through his property, which affects lots 20 and 19.
And just curious, why, why can't there be the extra 5 feet?
Oh, because I have grading for a septic system, and the septic system is, they're all, as I told you before, they're very, very tight, we have a house 20 feet septic, the septic's are perfectly designed, it all works because the soils work, and right there, you can see it's kind of narrow at that point, so visually, that's all I could do.
So on the slope, could you do some vegetation, just, I mean, I'm looking at all the requests and wondering, yeah, why, why couldn't that be met too? I understand that you have a grade issue for the...
We have a grade on this side.
If you had some sort of vegetation there, screening there?
So Maguire asked you for that, is that Maguire?
That would give, that, that buffer distance plus, would impact the, the septic system.
We were afraid that that would open the slippery slope, that if we provided planting for one lot, that other people would want it similarly planted, and then it got complicated and expensive.
Okay, well, I just looked at the comments that have come in, that's the one thing that hadn't been met.
We didn't want, we wanted to treat everybody...
Hey, can you send me some of these comments, so I get a chance to read some of the details?
I, I read the details, I read the minutes, that's where the comments are.
Mr. Simone has contacted my office as well, with Allen, with Foxham a few times.
He's actually there.
We've basically said that, he's right here, that we could do the best we can for him, and what I've said is this is the best we can do, without reconfiguring the lots and all of that.
Yeah, you've tried to be calm, Daniel, it just, that was one that I was saying.
Just one more, we're really not in this, but go ahead.
Okay, so, explain to me, is there, is there a specification that you have to have so much room for the septic system, or why can't you additionally add 5 feet to Mr. Simone's lot for a buffer zone?
That they're grading issues, but...
Yeah, when you do a septic system, you have to go 5 feet outside the septic system. This is a setback from the front to maintain all the setbacks on the houses, you get a house, 20 feet to the septic system, and in the width of the septic system, 5 feet around it, all has to be cut out. That takes you right to that spot, 15 feet. Right over here, I have a slope that I have to cut down, that slope has to meet certain breakout criteria that the water health has, and same thing on the other side, so that's one.
And you have to have a gradual slope, not a steep slope?
Mr. Simone, since we've talked about you a lot.
I can wait until it comes up later.
No, thanks, bro.
Might as well deal with it now.
Thank you very much, thank you, Chris Simone, 90 feet Woodcomb. So my concern would be when you, when they do cut the slope, if there's any chance that impacts that 15-foot no-cut zone, I don't know the exact, the degree to which you're going to cut. And the, and the second point I would make, and I have spoken with both of these gentlemen, to Mr. Maguire's point, I mean, obviously, I would welcome very much the idea that there's some plantings targeted, not across the entirety of things, I don't think that's necessary, but in spots where it does become thin, or no trees, no screening whatsoever, in part it is going to compete, and these guys know, that's my opinion, I'd like to see that. But I'd really just like some clarification on also, just the degree to which you think that, what's the chance that some of the trees within the 15-foot get damaged by the cutting, or how you have to cut into that slope you just described? Later, I, you know, I just have a couple miscellaneous questions, but those are my big questions.
You've got it on the plan, if he, if he doesn't give us 15 feet, he's got to give us 15 feet.
It's, it's actually an easement on the lot, so it's not just a no-cut zone, it's an actually easement on the lot. And just to give clarification, the distance between the back of Mr. Simone's house and his property line, it's 100 feet, so we're talking about 100 plus 15, 115 feet, it's not like it's right...
It's not like he can't plant some trees himself.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, it's good to understand the details and...
All right, does anyone have any other questions regarding the scenic roadway, so we can close that aspect of it, take a vote on that?
I think you've done a good job with the Sanderson Road, especially changing the road on Sanderson Road, because those trees are huge and...
One point... I guess move to close?
Well, in the tree wardens' comments, they're in the record, into the record, very good, thank you.
Before we close?
What's your question, comment?
Go ahead, you first.
No, he's done.
I have a comment. On the, on the cuts, on the roadway end, you're going to have a fairly steep slope on both sides of that roadway. Now, we have a scenic road that's going to, now all of a sudden have this big, wide, open space that becomes very, very new construction. I'm looking for plantings along those slopes to, to green that visual open cut.
As a division.
Down some, so, do you have plantings planned for either side of that driveway end?
Yeah, let's talk about that slope. You said steep slope, your regulations are backwards from, we've done this for 31 years, and I know we've talked about this, I won't believe it, but they're backwards from every other regulation. Normally, it's 2 to 1 and cut, 3 to 1 and fill. You're 3 to 1 and fill, which is fine, but you're 4 to 1 and cut. So you're very, you're not steep at all, as a matter of fact, you're, just so you know, 3 to 1 is in the side of 495. When you're in the middle island, that's 3 to 1, that's what a tractor can do. You're less than that, so it's not steep at all.
So we're, I'll rephrase my word, we have an open area that's now, now wide open, and as you're passing down this nice scenic road, you've got this, this big eyesore, open brand-new van.
To answer your question quickly, we've reviewed 42 trees on the property.
Yeah.
And I told you before, I didn't think generally, you just plop them down 2 per lot, because some of the lots have excess frontage, some of the lots, and you don't want to do that. I wanted to do it at a certain interval, which I think makes sense, and I think you guys were all agreeing, it was a question of how many. So the total is 42, let's say we go along with that, we could put some down through here.
I think, I think that entryway needs, needs both mature trees and shrubs to green it up, and I don't think that should be taken away from the 42 trees for the rest of the project. That's, that's my two cents.
Well, Mr. Crowley, you know, I've kind of gone along with everything that you've talked about here, I'm going to take a little bit off of that, because there's nothing in the regulations that talks about...
I understand that.
...planting bushes or...
I understand that.
Trees other than street trees, so.
Yeah.
We've done what's required, certainly, I think, kind of a lot more than what's required.
But we've, we've also given a lot more than what's required, because we're allowing Cape Cod berm, and we're allowing slow granite.
We haven't allowed Cape Cod berm yet.
Well, well, but we've been, correct, we haven't allowed it yet, so maybe, maybe we should think about putting some shrubs there.
Why don't we finish the, why don't we finish the scenic roadway? Why don't we finish that, and then we can get into the details of the rest of the subdivision? This is not scenic roadway.
Yeah, this, this is...
Okay, Richard, if you want to talk about it, well, we're talking about Cape Cod berm and negotiation.
If you can, if you can see it from that road, it's, it's part of the scenic road.
It's not part of the roadway, it's actually part of the...
Your contribution is, is the public street trees and the stone walls.
Right.
Right.
But we can still discuss this.
We're going to discuss it after, inside the subdivision talks. As far as the scenic roadway, do we have any other issues with the scenic roadway?
No.
No, I entertain a motion to approve the cutting of the trees and the moving of the 90-foot of stone wall, putting it on the side through the bus stop, and the rest of it going down the left side of the entrance way in.
Yeah, second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, now we're back into the nuts and bolts of the subdivision. Okay, now we're back into the nuts and bolts of the subdivision.
What, sorry, about waiver requests?
You're gonna ask us about the berm, he's gonna have the Cape Cod berm, now he'll bring up the trees, so let's get right into it.
Very good.
Ready? Now you can ask. All right, you're gonna wanna ask, no, no, I'll let you ask. I don't wanna spoil your fun.
Jeff has the list.
Well, I'll, I'll open it up with, I've been walking around a bunch of sidewalks in the Cape Cod berm with the, with the paved sidewalks. Within five years, there's a two-inch, within ten, there's about a five or six or seven-inch space. I don't wanna, I want granite curbs throughout. That's what I, that's what I'm going for.
That's what I said, division plan.
Because the town is gonna take those over eventually, and those Cape Cod berms get ripped out by the, by the plow every single year.
That's what I knew said.
So that's what my opinion on it, and that's it. Done. Over.
Okay.
I'm absolutely of that, that frame of mind, too, because we're building a, you know, what's going on here is gonna be here for fifty or a hundred years. Cape Cod berm is absolutely not, nowhere near a fifty, and not, not even ten years.
But the plows are breaking up the granite curbing every year now.
Four ninety-five, all those things there, they hold up.
Yeah. Granite, granite's a standard in the state, and it's a standard for just about every single municipality.
It's a lot longer than it will Cape Cod berm, but regardless, that was my statement. I don't need to reiterate.
What other waivers? I wanna try for.
Can we vote on them as you bring them up?
I think you, I think he kinda realizes he's not gonna get that one.
Actually, if you could give me a recommendation, so I can write the final decision.
She'll put it in there.
Then you won't vote on everything until after the next meeting, but we all understand.
How we're going?
So we're going through the waivers, seventy-five to eighty.
So, he brings one up, we say, yes, 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 no?
He gets the flavor of it, and Maren puts it in, in the decision.
All right, just to go through the list real quickly, and you know what, I wanna go quickly. You've already granted the one on the grades from ten to eight percent. You granted the one from the twenty lots to twenty-one lots.
Did they?
Yes, I've got it done.
Can you have it in bold, Mary?
Where are we at?
Comments some before.
Maybe you didn't per, per say, grant it, but you agreed to do it.
We agreed to that, twenty-one lots.
I wasn't sure I heard that response.
On the K value one, it's been determined by a review engineer that he concurs with our approach of going with his twenty mile an hour speed limit. That's what his response is, so that waiver's been withdrawn, we don't need that.
Okay.
The curbing, we just talked about, catch basin location to allow rain garden, that was a no-brainer, it's LID, that was not an issue. We're gonna skip street trees for a minute. Water study, we, you asked us to get a letter from the water department, we did. So you need to address that one, that one's not done yet.
Yeah, so you.
Well, what do you want them to address?
Oh, a water study is required to prove that it's adequate water. Instead, we asked the water department, knowing the situation in the area, if there's adequate water, without doing a water study, they wrote you a letter that says, yes, there is adequate water.
So you're asking the board to waive the requirement for water study, since they got a letter for water?
Since we got a letter from the water department.
Correct.
Yeah.
We're good.
Yeah, it's in our minutes.
Catch basin locations, there's, we have a small increase of forty-four feet, and the review engineer says, as long as we provide a gutter line capacity analysis, which was one thing we didn't provide yet, neither one of us think it's gonna be a problem, so it's one of those things that I think, even he said, we will provide the gutter line calculation, but it shouldn't be an issue whatsoever. And that one you did on the outlet of the pipe, and the pipe type you wanted to wait for highway, and that is basically anytime going off the roadway, I've asked to go with HDPE, high-density polyethylene pipe, in the roadway still with concrete pipe.
Exactly.
I don't know if he's responding, Mary, do you know if he?
No, his usual response to all this is he would much, he would prefer the RCP, but it's always up to you which one you are.
RCP it is, yeah. It's a fifty-year to a hundred-year project.
It's not a big deal for us. It's just easier pipe to deal with with a plastic pipe, one guy could lift it, as opposed to the machines.
Concrete.
Concrete.
Not gonna fight over that. Light posts. So, we, you asked us to go to Littleton Light and Power on the lighting that I provided, they asked us to do a different light fixture with LED, and we put that on the plan, this is what it looks like.
Very good. Are the LEDs the standard, the type of LED that goes in here, is it the standard for the light, light and water, for the rest of the town?
That's the standard, exactly, that's what they want. It's a very different fixture than what we would provide, but we'll go, we put it on the plan, we changed our plan.
And for luminosity, is it?
Yeah, there's a luminosity table on the plan as well. I'll show it to you.
If he wants to know, how does it compare to that, what they used to?
Oh, it's the same.
Yeah, right, you made an argument trying to have.
Well, it's actually just LED.
They get this little charge.
Residential ambient.
So you're gonna go sixty, seventy-five feet before you basically run out of light. This is not intended to light it up like a parking lot.
Good, good.
It's definitely not intended to be a parking lot.
Right, that's the intent I got from you.
It's not gonna be Littleton Toyota. It's nowhere near like that. This is a residential subdivision.
Good.
Okay, so it's not supposed to be lit, it's supposed to provide lighting at the key critical areas, which are the intersections, I have a little point section here, and then the front. By the time I do here, here, I'd say, boy, it'd be silly not to put them in an interval and space them, so that's how we do it.
Nice.
Is that, that's the standard?
Can you put it over by Mr. Simone's house, so he can, instead of one of those downlights?
Locking plate, ball in the backyard.
It is a downlight. Inside it has a shield.
But I mean, it's like.
It's like lantern, an old-fashioned lantern lights.
There are many, there are many of these lights that don't, that you can't see the light when you're looking through the woods. This, you'll see, you'll see light, even if you don't see, even if you don't have lumens, you'll see a light there that you don't, didn't see before.
That's what they gave us.
As opposed to a lot of street lights we're using in, in, for instance, Andover that are flat.
The full cutoffs.
So when you look at it, you don't see any light, and if you look closer, you can see a shadow of light coming down below it.
This has an interior shield on it, the one they chose. So inside light fixture itself is a shield to stop it from going up.
No, but he's concerned about seeing it vertically.
I think they wanna see it. I think that's, the intent is they wanna see lighting. Lighting looks pretty if it's done right.
That's what the light, water department wants, so that's fine.
It's exactly the same as if you're in, in a house, looking out the window, and you see the, the light in the other, in the other guy's house. That's the kind of light this will, will look like, as opposed to no, no light in that window.
That's what they gave us.
That's what they wanted, so.
That's just, that's light water, huh?
Yeah. Do you comment on the light?
Could we, could we double-check with light and water on that?
No, this is their standard, yes.
That's it.
So what we've asked for, if you remember, your requirement is to put lanterns for each individual house. Due to the way this is shaped out, I think that would be silly-looking, number one. Number two is requiring everybody to turn it on every night, and they may not turn it on. So we're basically turning the cost of it from individual builders or individual homeowners to the developer. He's gonna put all the infrastructure in. So it's actually more money for the developer. Why are we doing that? Because I think it's a better product.
And who's gonna pay for it in the long run?
That's why they're LEDs. It will become a town, town requirement.
The town, well, the town's gonna end up taking over the lighting of those streets.
That's, yeah.
But with LED lights, the cost should be nominal.
We have a question?
Yes, Mr. Simone.
Thank you.
It's all relative.
Everything's relative.
I know this, there was this conversation at the last meeting, too, just in, in general, the number of fixtures, and I understand the type of fixtures changed. Sounds like a good change. I just want the board to keep in mind that, right now, it's a dark, quiet forest. And so, to all the butters, you know, our view, at least my view, would be, frankly, less lighting is better to keep it darker. You know, it's dark right now. It's, it's really dark, and that's a good thing.
Do your kids walk on the, on Woodco Mavetall at night?
Uh, no.
Why not?
Too dark. How many lights are we talking now?
We have only child. Three in the front, so seven lights back here.
What's the baby?
To Mr. Simone's, just to give you an example, he's a hundred and sixty feet away from the nearest light.
Try and see, I'm sorry.
And the light, light only goes, like I said, sixty-five feet, then this disappears to zero.
He'll be lucky to get to his lot.
So he will not get any ambient light whatsoever.
So you're only talking ten, and you could've had twenty-one there, twenty-two there.
Right.
So you're only talking ten, including the roadways, that's a big reduction.
I think that's nice. I, I'm glad you think so, because it's our doing. I was telling Paul, it's not, I could easily, it's easier for me to say, just put a lantern note in the plan.
Yeah, it's a better design.
But I don't think it's a better.
All right, good, I think it's nice. Can we go, move on?
Yes, you can. Sidewalk type, this is, again, another odd one. You require, we asked for a waiver to do what's normally done, Batumis concrete sidewalk, which allows a little bit of flexibility versus a concrete sidewalk, which you really usually see if you get it in the city environment. So I would ask specifically, since you've kinda made your decision on the granite, and this is a big cost item, that you give us this one and go with the Batumis. I don't think there's any real long-term, short-term benefit to the town to have Batumis. It's actually oftentimes worse if you have street trees that, that raise the.
Plus, it's easier to repair by Batumis than it is concrete.
Concrete's a big dog, you have to cut it up, form it.
I probably with Batumis, tired.
We're gonna get granite, we're not gonna argue about that later?
That's what I just said.
No, we, it's, it's in our, it's in our rules, they have to put granite in.
It's up to you, so.
In our rules, they have to put concrete.
You give me two bushes at the start of the place?
This is, this is, this is where we.
I don't really, I think it'll be okay with the, with the.
Batumis?
This is where we talk about a lot more plantings.
Even though.
Now, we were at forty-two trees.
I think the tree issue, honestly, the.
We need to see more trees at the front entry, and we'll.
We'll leave that, we, we're kinda, that's a different bridge, Richard.
And then more trees interior.
Well, keep going.
I don't have a problem with Batumis. I think it's gonna be easier.
Trees on the entryway.
Yeah, we, I, I, basically, before I told you we were gonna do twenty-four, and then we talked about, I said, well, if you wanna be, because that's what I thought fit at the, every, whatever, seventy-five feet. And then we talked about thirty-six, if you remember, or in the low thirties. And then somebody said, well, how about two per lot? And I said, well, thirty-six plus six, it's not that many, we could spread them out. That seems reasonable. Take those six and put them right here, because I think thirty-six worked, in my mind, better for the subdivision. You talk about every sixty feet or so. So you put three down here, I mean, on each side, that's six trees. You don't wanna get them too close. You say, I don't wanna put them too close, they just, the canopies bump into each other, and you lose the effect.
The.
How's that, Richie? You like that idea?
Six trees over here.
Six, six trees plus about a dozen shrubs.
I could do that.
All right, done.
It's something that sort of looks natural.
Done, next.
Now, what happened to the, the sidewalk, now that they?
Now, you're getting Batumis sidewalk.
Yeah, Batumis.
See how we make things happen. Okay, that's it, I think I'm on my way to talk.
No, you have a new waiver request, based upon the comments from the engineer regarding some of the traffic things.
Okay, so, the one thing we have, the two things we haven't done on your traffic review, and a bunch of things you have to make a decision on, which we'll go over in a minute, minor, minor, minor things. But the two big things are, one is my detention basin outlet, the technical thing. It's related to this floor, but these two cells, it's a three-cell basin, and I may have to play around with the cells. So if you wanted to go forward tonight, then I could, I could tell you that I'll work it out with Luke. We've worked everything else out. But we have that one kinda significant issue on drainage, but it will be worked out, it has to be worked out. The other one is this traffic thing. If you recall, I submitted this in early April, and it was snowing the ground, and we're getting ready to do it, so I never did a real detailed analysis of the street intersection. And he commented that, as part of a traffic review, and we had asked for a waiver of the traffic review in its entirety. He came back and suggested sort of a partial waiver, do some mitigation, do some site distance analysis. And we're saying, listen, this is where it's going. It's the best location for it. There is no problem with site distance. It provides one with a thousand feet going this way, and this way we see at least in the intersection. So we, I guess we're saying, why do we have to do one? And this one, we did have a problem, where we were gonna put it here, and we voluntarily moved it, instead of cutting the trees or dealing with it, over to a place where we could add the maximum site distance that we determined in the field. So now it's a matter of, how do you put all that on paper? It's not easy, just so you know, to prove all that. It was very easy to go out there and say, this is the best spot for it, anybody could do that. We've done that with Luke, and I don't think he has an issue. It's just putting the documents. So we're asking for a waiver.
Why can't you, why can't you just give us a plan that shows the front door mitigation of both those spots, just show us, the site distances on either way?
We, we, we can do that, and if that's a condition of approval, we'll be happy to.
Why don't we just do it that way? That way, it's on there, it's in the plan.
You have a record of it.
You have a record of it, and you're not really asking for a waiver, because you've got five hundred feet this way, and a thousand feet this way, right?
It's a partial waiver, too, because we didn't do a quote traffic study.
But you did a site, you did the site distances.
As far as mitigation, we're not proposing any mitigation, because we don't have a problem.
Yeah, but it clearly makes sense with Allen Road, saving the trees and having that.
And we did provide you the traffic flows, the new.
Right.
The thing with the, the thing with the drainage and all that stuff, you're gonna work that out with Luke, and it doesn't affect any of the butters, or any, any way, shape or form.
Way inside the subdivision, yeah.
So why don't we, just give us, front door mitigation, what, what it's gonna look, or not mitigation, but front door site distances for both those, for both those roadways.
Okay.
Just put it on the plans, show us the distances, you know, as long as they're within, what, two-hundred-and-fifty feet, and it sounds like you're way past that.
Is there, are there any neighbors here? Are there any residents that live on those roads or near those roads? Yeah, so they're, what is the traffic like in your experience? Can anybody tell me if it's heavy, light? Do you think we need to do a traffic study? Traffic study, detailed traffic study, they go out and they put the, the markers in the, in the street, they counter traffic, morning and night, they, they determine where it's coming from, where it's going to, and, and then they come up with a report. It basically says, you got enough site distance, or you don't, sort of boils down to. Is there a lot of traffic on that road?
I'd describe it as relatively light.
Is there?
The traffic I've seen on Woodco tends to be, you know, I've assumed high school traffic, so busy around seven AM, and then busy again around two.
Do they drive fast?
Yeah.
They do drive fast.
But traffic studies don't actually address.
They're doing that.
Yeah, it would, it would address signage, it would, yeah. It picks up the speed the cars go, and would recommend signs, you know, go slow signs for an intersection.
But that's, the town has to take care of that, anyway.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cawthon.
Has this board inquired with the water department if contamination is, is an issue where the wells are so close? Have you talked to the water department about that?
Oh, my God, yeah.
The water, the water department's been intimately involved in this project.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell.
So that's, it's okay?
Not an issue, no.
Yeah.
Well, it's a downstream, actually, from this, I believe.
We just, we need to have some, the traffic addressed in, in some fashion, so I'm, I'm okay with sight lines, notations on the plans.
Okay.
All right, so move to close, move to move, move to move.
We got one.
Oh, we had a few little.
Let's get to it.
Okay, good, I'm happy to go real quick. All right, so Luke has a few things that you have to go. You probably could go them really fast, but let me deal with them, so they're on the record. Okay, we just up the traffic. Tree and stone walls, which we just did, they defer. The, we have a, we have a roadway crossing, I'm sorry, trail crossing over the wetland, which is always dry. It's always been dry ever since I've been there. I've always walked it. Currently, there's a trail that goes right here. And I don't know why, but Luke says he defers to you. He doesn't seem to have a problem with it, neither does conservation, and I don't wanna really put a bridge there when there's no bridge required. It's kinda silly. So he just defers to you. If you just say acceptable, we'll move on.
I think that would be acceptable.
Okay.
At a later date, they wanna do something, they put it in.
I have to talk to Luke and Maren, because I agreed to do something, I forgot what it was that I agreed to the meeting. But we also have a trail going over this spillway right here, which basically is a stone, so it dips down and comes back up, and it's a lot larger stone. And I agreed to do something, and I didn't do it, because I forgot what I did. I'll put that on the plan, whatever it is, I agree to do.
Okay.
Right, and, and, you know, the people that have looked at it and suggested trails, unfortunately, are on vacation.
I'll be able to get that analysis, like I told you, we're ready. They, we have a condition that's an odd one, it's a chicken before the egg type of thing, number twenty. No definitive plan will be approved unless the developer submits a written certification approval designed by all utilities which are to provide services within the subdivision. We've provided the water, we've provided the AT&T already, that they were accepted the crossing, and the water. We've got a lot of comments from Electric Light, but we don't have a full, a letter from them that.
Certification.
Certification. We don't have a comment from Verizon, we don't have a comment from Comcast, and they won't give us one until we have the signed plans. You know that, it happens all the time. So if you can make this a condition, we'll get it to you.
Condition of approval, we'll make it a condition of approval.
That's, that's the Verizon National Line that crosses there.
No, no.
No, this is different. This is, this is a condition of approval.
To the houses.
That there's utilities available to the houses. Well, of course, there'll be utilities available to the houses, or else the people won't buy them.
Yeah.
But, but they wanted it in advance of the plan being finalized. The utility companies don't review hypothetical lights.
You know, you talk like that's a crazy idea. We have, we've heard of a subdivision they're building right now that doesn't have septic systems, doesn't have a septic system yet, so crazy things happen.
All right. All right, then.
The RCP, I'll cruise along, the RCP pipe one you addressed, the detail they want me to fix that doesn't comply with the town's, lighting, you just addressed, that takes care of two comments, twenty-six and twenty-seven, and we cruise all the way. of two comments, 26 and 27, and we cruise all the way.
Listen, rather than rack your brain if there's something you missed, you need five, four out of, you need four votes for this. There's only four of us. We're gonna continue this till the 11th of September, and if there's any other issues, we'll take care of them right at the end.
There's just two more.
Maren?
Your typical planning board covenant says that the improvements shall be completed within two years. We'd like longer to do that. Number one, we don't want to have to rush to construct the subdivision. We've talked about constructing this in phases and doing the A&R lots first, and then we've also talked about taking the lots, what are they, 28, 29, and 30?
Allen Road.
Allen Road lots and putting them on the market last. So what we'd like to do is to have the covenant that this road be constructed or bonded, partly constructed and bonded within four years, and the other one within five years. That will give us plenty of time to be able to see if somebody else is interested in buying this. It doesn't rush us to put this on the market, and oh, by the way, the town's got six months to decide whether they want to buy this once it's all completed anyway. So we don't want to be rushed to do things in 18 months. So we wanted that to be go from two years to four years.
We always give extensions anyway.
I'd like to see an extension that way. It's not, if we bang 20 houses in at once, that's an influx of the.
That's fine, because we always give it.
No problem with the.
We'll give it to you.
It's good having the flexibility with Allen Road. I can tell you, we're talking to the Sandersons. They probably are gonna continue Oak Hill fairly soon, readily. Allen Road, they have no intention, they want to talk to you guys about that, and they don't have any real plans per se to run out and do this. I don't think they're not gonna not do it, but they're not rushing us to get it done.
But we don't want to be artificially rushed.
Four years is no problem.
The other question was that the open space, I think you want it to be conveyed to the town, isn't that correct?
Correct.
I brought up an esoteric issue because in a nearby town, I've got a piece of property not as nice as this, and we've been trying to get the town to accept it for four years. And I just can't get anybody to get any momentum to get it done. So I was looking for a fallback that if we kill ourselves trying to convey this to the town, town meeting could refuse to accept this as a discretionary act. We'd like a fallback to be able to convey it to a nonprofit organization like it says in the, in the planning, subdivision by law. So I drafted a condition that says if we try, we spend two years trying to get the town to accept it, town doesn't want it, we can convey it to a nonprofit.
Paul, you're in Littleton. I don't think we would.
We never turned down.
Turned down.
Let me ask you this, though. What's the trigger for that?
It's two years from the date that the planning board releases the lots from the planning board covenant.
All lots?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, any lots from this, that we would have to start that process to convey the land.
What about the A&Rs?
The A&Rs aren't part of the ownership of the open space. The A&Rs are A&Rs, these are tied to this.
But they're theoretically part of this open space plan.
Sure. You want a different time?
Yeah, we'd like a different time, even if they don't decide to do that.
Okay.
The open space should be conveyed.
Should be at a certain time, since you're gonna do the A&R lots, we should get the open space.
Okay.
Soon as those go, the open space.
All right, so at the last of the sale of these lots, two years from that point?
Two years is fine.
Okay.
Works.
From the last of the sale of the A&R lots?
No, from the first.
Oh, from the first?
From the first.
No, 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 from the last. That's being more than generous.
On their part or ours?
On their part.
Well, what about the start of the subdivision?
That's what I'm saying, they'd be more than generous.
It's usually at the very end.
Usually something.
It's usually at the very end. If they're doing it as part of the A&Rs and not the subdivision, that's, they could, they could wait until the subdivision was done.
Yeah, we.
Just as being proposed, what, I thought you said the end of them, so.
Above the sale of the lots, the A&R lots would trigger the two-year period within which we'd have to kill ourselves to convey it to the town.
Correct.
And if, and if, and if something really strange happened, the town didn't take the property, then we would have the option to convey it to a nonprofit.
I don't see why we couldn't tie that to the sale of the first lot instead of the sale of the last lot. Then it would be conveyed to the town sooner than later.
You're putting, you're putting an awful lot on our plate.
No, I think.
This is code for me. You're putting an awful lot on my plate. I have a lot of things I need to do with this project and getting that open space property conveyed, I'd like some time to be able to do that.
After two years?
Well, you know how it has to be.
I'm just playing with it. I know you're on vacation.
After the four A&Rs, two years after the four, the sale of the last A&R.
Okay, seven A&Rs.
Okay, yeah.
And you did ask a question of the conservation.
How many of those are A&Rs?
Would they be willing to be the backup holder? And actually, Rick Finley had to go off to a funeral in Maine, but they did take a vote. I recused myself, and they did agree in concept.
So it would be the trust or some other nonprofit, but would.
Conservation Commission first, for some reason gets.
And they would definitely want it.
Town first.
Town first, not conservation.
Not to the Conservation Commission?
Not to the Conservation.
With what is selectment?
The town of, the town of.
The town, so that.
Wait a minute, that doesn't make sense.
No, it's gotta be 48.
That's not what you've been talking about all along. Conservation Commission, and you put whatever restrictions on it to keep it open space. If it goes to town for its selectment, then it can go to town meeting and get used for something else.
But you have an escarp and kettle hole, not, that is the open space.
Well, the.
Twenty years, people have been trying to protect it for conservation.
The Conservation Commission ties it up. We just went through an issue where it took state legislation.
That's fine, I have a problem with conservation.
Wait a minute, the Conservation Commission was given that, they didn't request it or anything else. It was attorney that did it, it was attorney's fault.
To change things once they go into the Conservation Commission's hands is an act of legislature.
But we're not, there's no, there's no value to this.
Isn't that what you want to do, tie it up?
Right, there's no, there's no extenuating circumstances with this, that it's gonna be other than open space, walking trails and things like that.
Right.
But it's who holds control of that.
You remember, there's two open spaces, A, which is all this, and then B, which is the field. And B will have in the documents the ability to farm it out, lease it out, so it'll continue as a farm, just as you see it now.
They may want to put a, they may want to put a soccer field there.
Well, no, but that's, I don't think that's what we had anticipated, because we anticipated regardless who was gonna own it, it would be subject to a conservation restriction, and we did not anticipate that it could be used for ball fields. We didn't consider that to be an exception. If that's what you, as a majority wants to do, I guess you could, but that's not what we anticipated.
In according to Savis, if you put a ball field on, given it's an aquifer area, he would insist there'd be a turf field to protect the areas.
Well, that's a great place for a turf field.
Well, I don't think so. It doesn't work, basically.
I mean, the.
I mean, this is much like.
Well, we can address that later, but presently it doesn't have to go to conservation.
We're gonna have four, five years to decide what entity gets it, okay? It's gonna be donated to the town, some entity, town or conservation, okay? Ma'am, you have any other, or are you done? I know, I'm gonna get, you have any, you're good. Ma'am, you had to hand up, name for.
Can I just ask a question?
Name for Maren, please.
My name is Kathy Zerming. I live at 83 Sanderson Road. And I haven't been here since, well, a while ago, when there was discussion about a lot kind of in our backyard on Taylor, kind of the corner of Taylor and Sanderson. I wonder, is that still in the plans or was that one, that one go away?
I mean, Whitcombe and Sanderson.
Whitcombe and Sanderson.
Yeah, this lot is still here.
It is still there.
Yep. But one point, we talked about a road through here and other things, that's all been removed. But the lot, lot 30.
Well, you couldn't put a road through there because it's a wetland.
Uh, we were gonna, I can't remember what something.
That's a, that's a, a stream.
This is the wetland here, this is open space. We were gonna have a lot there, that's what it was. Early, early plan, there was a lot on this side of the wetland. There's a lot there. So on your left side, there'll be a lot.
Right, but you couldn't have a lot here because that's a waterway.
This is the waterway.
Right.
That's all driving.
So budding real close to your house.
Yeah, it's not really.
Right, so it's, it's an open space.
But I'm wondering about the one, the other lot is still there?
Yes.
Wasn't there talk of that one going away?
Yes, there was at one time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's so dense.
What they did is they gave, they gave up more land over there, open space, and they put the three houses there instead of run back, instead of along, right along the whole front of the road. What they, what they gave up for, to get that one lot, they gave up much more than what they could have had.
They could have had three lots right on the road.
They could have had three lots right on the road.
Seven altogether.
Yeah, and they gave up a bunch more to just, to get, they gave up three to get four.
That'd impact a lot of Sanderson Road, too.
We gave it four to get three, actually.
However that works.
Anyone else have a question?
How many ended up with?
Thirty-two instead of the forty-six that we had at one.
Which was crazy, but that was that. So we're gonna continue this till September 11th. What time, Maren? By that time, we'll have a decision. You and Paul, you and Maren are gonna work out the decision.
Yes.
When it comes, hopefully it's all set for us.
Okay, so, starting in September, we'll probably start at 7:30 for the meeting, so this can go on at 8:30.
Is that good?
That works.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work, by the way.
Thank you.
We have a, I think we have a subdivision, everyone's gonna be proud of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, you've done a lot to accommodate the interests and needs.
Given shape.
Thank you for being accommodating, or at least.
Thank you, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, back to business. We have a 7:45 that we're woefully late on. This was important, and it was good to get everything done. So, public hearing, wireless special permit, 559 Newtown Hill Road, watertight, water tank site. This is the upgrade equipment there. Is anybody from AT&amp;T here? I mean, from.
You have to read.
I mean, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
T-Mobile, excuse me.
Before you start your presentation, we have to go through this.
They're all T-Mobile.
7:45 was the trees on, the trees on Oak Hill Road?
Already done, they were done.
That had already happened.
That was the first thing.
There was a couple of big trees that they've taken down.
The, what was the determination on those?
The trees that they asked to be taken down are gonna be allowed, and there was two on.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The trees that were, they've asked to be taken down. Jeff, can you, how many trees on Oak?
That was the, if you guys want to talk about it out there, we have a.
One was diseased, one's a large pine that might get hit by a storm.
All right, read it, Mitch.
Public hearing. Renew and modify wireless telecommunications special permit, 559A Newtown Road, T-Mobile. The town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 14th, 2014, at 7:45 p.m. in room 103 of the Shattuck Street School Town Hall, 37 Shattuck Street. To consider the application for a special permit renewal and modification to pursuant to master and law chapter 40A and the Code of the Town of Littleton, zoning wireless telecommunications tower and facilities, section 173-128 through 173-133. Property location, 559A Newtown Road, map U30 parcel 5A. Property owner, Town of Littleton Water Department. Applicant, Global Signal Acquisitions Third LLC, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, and Sprint Spectrum LP. The applicant is seeking to renew and modify an existing special permit under the wireless telecommunications and facilities by law to allow specific equipment updates and associated improvements at the 559A Newtown Road water tank site. Application and plans can be viewed at the planning board and town clerk's office during their business hours. Any person interested in wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear before at the time and place as designated. Richard Crowley Ford, Jerry Portante, clerk.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dan Klasnick. I'm an attorney. I have offices in Linfield, Massachusetts. As has already been read into the record, an application has been filed for the renewal of the special permit with a modification of one of the existing facilities. Initially, what we had done is we had filed the application form, but in addition to that, we also provided the board with an as-built drawing. It's our understanding that one of the purposes of this meeting, in addition for the T-Mobile antenna swap, is also a renewal of the original special permit for the tower, because under your bylaw, there's a five-year term. So one of the reasons we included those additional entities on the application would relate to the fact that they actually have control and ownership of a tower. T-Mobile is just a tenant on the particular tower. So we included, as I said, as-built, and in addition, we included a set of plans that depict specifically what T-Mobile is proposing to do. I guess the first action would be, you know, the actual renewal of the.
Do you have a picture in front of you, or is it in our package?
What's that?
What the new arrays are gonna look like?
Yes. If you look to the T-Mobile plans, which were included with the application. Currently, T-Mobile has six antennas installed on the 110-foot tower at 59 feet. All they're going to be doing is taking off those six antennas and putting six new antennas in their place, and in addition, they'll be installing a fiber cable to support the operation. The ground equipment is not proposed to change. They have existing cabinets that are within the fenced area. Those aren't going to change, so it is just a very, almost like a maintenance function. All this is necessary as they continue to upgrade their network, 4G and other services. They need different antennas to support those particular functions.
Are the antennas basically looking the same as the old ones?
Yes, they are almost, pardon me?
They're at the same locations?
They're at the exact same height and using the same mounts, actually.
Okay.
I see no problem.
Paul, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I know I've asked this question before, but those big, ugly antennas from the 50s.
Wrong, wrong site.
I'm sorry.
Isn't this Newtown Road?
This is, this is the water tower hill.
You're thinking.
You're thinking up behind Yap's house. Those horns, it'd cost more and would ruin, ruins the integrity of, well, that, other words, not a water tower.
You can't even see that from, can't see that from anyone. Okay, I'm okay.
Two big differences between the two.
Do you have any concerns?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Newtown Road. Actually, one of these, fiber off the cable that's coming down, so it's gonna be underground?
No, it just runs from the equipment cabinets up the tower to the antennas.
So it doesn't come down the hill at all?
No, it's just connecting the cabinets to the antennas. There's no change to any of the other infrastructure.
The only other, my only other concern is the concern I have every time people go up there is, at night, at day, make sure the gate's locked. Because it's conservation land up there, and there's been times when the gates have been unlocked, and, I mean, you can go up there, cycle, joyriding across the hills, which has happened.
Maren, how are we set for the renewals? Are the renewals from the primary carrier offset? Everything's good there?
I'm used to seeing them for, you know, one carrier at a time. Anytime anybody has to come in to update their equipment, that's usually when we catch them to come back and renew and update, so, yeah.
So, size, you know, we're good.
With this approval, you'll be up to date.
Okay. Who is the primary?
Well, Sprint originally developed the tower.
So Sprint's the owner of the tower and everything?
Yes.
The primary, yeah. Yeah. I want to stand up motion to approve the renewal of the T-Mobile special permit on the water, the Newtown Hill water tank site.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Okay, the, the next one.
Want to read that one, too?
Oh, yeah.
There's nobody here, let's just.
Want me to read it?
Well, legally, it has to be read.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me read it. Which one is this one? This is, uh.
Great Road?
This is, yeah, Great Road.
686 Great Road, T-Mobile. The Town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 14th, 2014, at 8:00 p.m. in room 103 of the Shattuck Street Town Hall, 37 Shattuck Street.
In room one oh three of the Shattuck Street Town Hall, thirty-seven Shattuck Street, to consider the application of special permit renewal and modification pursuant to MJS, Master of Law, chapter forty-eight, and the code of town of Littleton zoning, wireless communications tower facilities, sections one seventy-three dash one twenty-eight through one seventy-three, one thirty-three. Location is six eighty-six Great Road, map R twenty-four, parcel fifteen, known as a spectacle pond site. The owner is the town of Littleton Water Department. Applicant is the attorney, CCTM LLC and T-Mobile Northeast LLC, correct?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, applicant is seeking to renew and modify an existing special permit under the tele-, wireless telecommunications facility by law to allow specific equipment updates. One additional ground cabinet and associated improvements to spectacle pond site application and plans can be viewed at the planning board, town clerk's office during business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Peter Scott for Gerald Portante.
Okay.
Good evening.
Same thing?
Yes, I mean, essentially the same. Changing of the arrays. The only, uh, the only difference here is that they will be adding one additional equipment cabinet on the existing concrete pad inside the existing compound area. The pad and everything is already there. They're just putting a cap at next to it to accommodate some additional radio equipment. Fiber, fiber cable, place out six antennas with six new antennas at the same height as the existing antennas.
Will not increase the pad?
No, it's not an increase in the pad, the pad is only there to accommodate, uh-
Moved, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
What is the, what is the upgrade, uh, doing?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's, uh, that's for a while. It's allowing them to continue to enhance and deploy their 4G service, just like all the other carriers, they're trying to adapt to the data requirements and demands that, that are being placed upon the networks. So unfortunately, you need to provide different antennas to propagate those signals, and for T-Mobile, I think a lot of it is, a lot of their equipment is just simple upgrade. It's almost like a maintenance function, where there are new, better antennas that are operationally better to allow them to support.
Does it make it faster with more capacity?
Um, I think that's one of the, one of the designs, yes. Certainly, the 4G, the whole, whole idea behind that is to allow upload and download speeds that are much faster, so people can sit there and watch their movies on that.
Will the speeds get faster than 4G eventually?
I would think so, yeah, I'm sure. That's a little beyond me, but I'm sure people are always looking to improve these things.
Read.
Uh, the town of Littleton Planning Board will hold public hearing on Thursday, August fourteenth, at eight fifteen, room one oh three of Shattuck Street Town Hall, thirty-seven Shattuck Street, to consider the application-
They still have ten June, I'm not counting.
For a special permit renewal and modification pursuant to the master general law, chapter forty-eight, and the code of town of Littleton zoning, wireless telecommunications towers and facilities, section one seventy-three dash twenty-eight through one seventy-three dash one thirty-three. The location is fifty-nine Porter Road, map R twelve, parcel four. The property owner's Spound Development Associates. Applicant is STC Six Company, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, and Sprint Spectrum. The applicant is seeking to renew and modify an existing special permit under wireless telecommunications and facilities by law to allow specific equipment updates and associated improvements at fifty-nine Porter Road site. Application and plans can be viewed at the planning board and town clerk's office during their business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Gerald Portante spoken, well, Peter Scott for Gerald Portante. How about it?
Same thing?
Yes, this is once again a renewal of its, of the permit and allowing for the modification of the T-Mobile facility. They're going to be replacing six antennas at the same height with six new antennas, and once again, adding just one additional fiber cable. There's no changes at all to the, uh, to the cabinets on the ground.
Well, this is private, too. We don't own this one.
No, it's a private property.
Put this over on them.
All right, this is the first one.
Spound Development, I guess?
Spound?
Spound, yeah.
S-P-O-U-D.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is like the first one.
It used to be orange wood.
Well, in the circumstances, we've approved everything for ourselves, so we must continue to do so, right?
We don't have to.
Well, it's only fair, doing it to others.
That's one of we've been there.
Hoping that we can change some of these things. I move to approve.
Some of-
I think the only question I had for you was, as a private site, sometimes you've required a bond, but it seems to be-
This, this is an issue these days.
We have a bond to take it down.
To take-
Initial.
Right.
Initial bond.
And for renewal, that, that bond continues?
We still have it, right? Someone?
Is, is this, do we need to reaffirm it?
Well, that's, that's for you guys to decide.
How big is this property at fifty-nine Porter Road?
It's, it's huge. It's huge, it backs up to four ninety-five.
So we're already, we're receiving revenue from the-
No.
Taxation of the land.
Of, of the land and the building, and then of the tower compound itself.
Yeah, that's fine, there's no reason to tax anybody any more than we're already taxed to death now.
Well, there's a tax.
I, I see no need for bond.
It's a tax.
We already have, we have a bond in place anyway, Maureen, right?
Question, does it continue?
No.
No, they're just bond for the tower.
Right.
Probably somewhere. And at one point, you were requiring separate bonds for each set of antennas.
Yeah, we stopped that, yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, once again?
Nope. So, let's leave it the way it is.
All right, uh, I'm, I move to approve.
I'm moving. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That was it?
Yes, sir, I think, uh, Sprint's, Sprint's going to be doing stuff.
How is this board compared to other boards in other towns?
There's no comparison, you guys are the best. I've got three of them in five minutes.
You can come back and get it all.
Got three of them in five minutes. Well, I've only observed you this evening, but it seemed like a very professional board, and, you know, going through the subdivision and everything like that.
Yeah. They'll be back next month, then ask his opinion after he finishes.
Great, we'll see you next month.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, thanks.
Spoken like a true lawyer.
On vacation until next Thursday, so I'll work with, um, Liz or Earl or whoever on the files.
You all done there now, Mikey?
Get that filed.
We hear that, um, Fletchers might actually come in, so-
So what time are they called for?
Seven forty-five, eight forty-five. Final for Maureen, if they really are coming.
Yeah, that's good, 'cause that's what they have.
Okay.
Maureen, are Fletchers really coming in?
Yes, um, Matt Waterman's coming.
So, just to give us an update of where they're at with the Littleton-
Where they're at with the plans, meet and greet, he hasn't been in for a while, where he is with the plans.
He has to make his money.
So it's enough, it's, it's not a, the Fletchers won't be a proposal, it's just an update on, on status.
Yeah, but it's a special-
We're still in the middle of the public hearing for the, um, open space special permit and definitive subdivision.
Yeah.
What was it, nine lots, if I'm remembering right?
Nine lots.
And we've continued for several meetings, um-
These are the hardest nine lots that I've ever seen.
Because they hadn't finished the plans, and, um, Matt wants to walk you through, you know, show you that there are, are updated plans and where they'd like to go next with it.
Very good. Who is this Pamela Way? What is this? And where is Pamela Way?
Pamela Way, off Ammanion Drive.
Okay.
It's a resale of an affordable unit.
Oh.
Just trying to get information out there to anybody who might know who-
All right, well, we've got two minutes, let's, let's talk about Lowian for a second, since we're going to be getting, oh-
Who's Lowian? We talked about earlier.
Lowian, that-
Paper Road?
Paper Road off Apollo Path, because more and more of them are going to start coming in, so we have to bring them up to sub-, as close as we can to subdivision standard. Got to think about a turnaround, or a second, a continuation of the road, because they need the frontage off of that, so.
And, and it's really good that you have the paper road policy in place, because that gives you the, um, design criteria that you're looking for, and the ability to look at each, each site in particular, because there's going to be so many different situations, and how, how do you best apply it?
Yeah.
What opened all these things up to, what, what opened up this, every lot down in, down in there for this?
The price of, the price of land.
And the reject, and the bylaw getting with, uh, town of Littleton going with Title Five jurisdiction, as opposed to their own bylaw, which was a little more stringent back in the, back in the day. So these lots probably wouldn't have passed twenty years ago. We're still not sure.
And now you have innovative alternative systems that are allowed, too.
We still don't know if this one, according to Jimmy, we're still not sure if this one's going to perk, so.
Which one's that?
Lowian, the one on Lowian.
And the innovative alternative systems only for-
But the other thing, and we have to, we really should follow-
Remakes.
Since these are grandfathered lots, they have to, they should have to stand on their own, there shouldn't be any waivers to these, there shouldn't be setback waivers or side setbacks. They're supposed to stand the way they were designed when, when the zoning came in.
Yes, new construction.
You're talking about all the ones down Long Lake area?
Long Lake area, any of the lots, yeah.
Right, and that, it's what Border Health has been doing on new construction.
Yeah, but nobody's, nobody's questioning that. Nobody's trying to force the envelope.
Well, yeah, we've had a few, but that's beside the point.
Well, that doesn't work.
They've given, they've given waivers, side setback requirements that actually pushed them-
Yes, that's another, side setbacks for structures is really a muddy area on, um, because there, there were no setbacks when the lots were created, so.
But they, what about, we're going into, according to the gentleman who's here, Mr. Comey, we're now going into letting the other lots that are on the other parts of the paper streets use the paper street as, for their septic.
Well, I don't know. They're doing it.
I think it was letting them.
They're doing it, yeah.
Illegally doing it.
They should have been.
Even if you don't use a paper road, if, if nobody ever uses it, never drives on it, never, there's a right of way on your property.
Yeah.
It isn't used for five hundred years. Somebody comes in and it's on, it's in the deed, that road is there.
All right, so then we should be letting them put septic systems.
That's right, so, I mean, he's, I don't know whether one is or isn't, so whoever the engineer that designs this thing, it's, it's got to come out of there, it's that simple.
Aaron, will you be following up with that?
Um-
With Roland and Border Health? Because it could be that the Border Health, the drawing they saw, didn't see the paper road on it.
Right, and that's where it's helped to all be office together anyway, so, yeah.
So, you know, so what we've talked about is now when these paper roads start coming in, Maureen, at least as a courtesy, lets us take a look at it, see if we have any concerns about it from now on. Before, they've been going directly to Roland, and Roland's been issuing-
Right, the, the small lot determination.
Small lot stuff, so we should at least take a look at it.
All right, well, the small lot determinations is, is the size of the lot before nineteen forty-nine, or fifty-nine, or something like that?
Seventy-one.
No, before that, it's in the fifties or, or before the sixties.
Fifty-one was zoning, but then, now there's a provision that it's protected until seventy-one because of the six-
Maybe town meeting votes were-
Where the town meeting votes went, they put a provision in that it says that the lots are grandfathered in perpetuity, the previous lots, that's why we're stuck with them.
So that means anything before nineteen seventy-four?
Seventy-one, I think it is.
Seventy-one?
I think it's seventy-one.
That, that is undersized, under-
Under-sized, continues to have its, continues to be protected, even though they, nowadays it's seven years, it's seven years, eight years.
Eight years.
Zoning change goes in, you have eight years to act on your lot, otherwise you lose your zoning protection. Now, the old lots are in perpetuity, because we put that little clause in when we brought them to town meeting.
Very good.
Okay, well, since we're having, this is really an informal discussion, since we don't have anything going on, why don't you give us an update of where you are with the Fletchers?
We're just digesting.
Is anyone coming, or are you already-
No, just me, we wanted to get in front of the board tonight, Matt Waterman, Light Tech Consultants. It's been a long time, obviously, since we've been here. We are working on the plans, we are, just hoping to bring them tonight, they're probably about eighty-five, ninety percent done. Um, we're going to get them tomorrow, either tomorrow or nearly the Monday. We got really busy, obviously, this summer, in the past couple of months, we apologize for continuing, but, uh, we do, we're getting through the peer review, and again, we're going to have plans to, the peer review in Maroon in the next day or so.
Okay.
Things got a little busy at our office, we apologize.
Same, uh, same basic nine houses, one, uh, two roads.
Yeah, yeah, no, the concept has stayed the same. Going through the peer review punch list, it was very thorough, and a lot of things to add to the plan set, but, uh, the concept hasn't changed, there's easements being added, there's updated stormwater management was probably the bigger, um, modification to the subdivision, but the number of lots in the open space has all stayed the same, almost exactly the same.
And the road, the two, two actually, two curve cuts?
Correct, yes, that has stayed the same.
Yeah.
You also have natural heritage?
Uh, we haven't filed with natural heritage.